At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, April 8th, 2013 Planning Commission Meeting to order. That brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is Roll Call. Pitt here. Price.
Here.
Longton.
Here.
Hema.
Here.
Duden is absent, right? Charnell.
Here.
And Shoblam.
Here.
That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have any motion?
I move.
I got a motion by Longton and a second by Price. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
I got a motion by Charnell and a, I think, Price. I think you beat him on that one. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the next item, which is public input. Is there any that you are aware of?
None that I'm aware of, thank you.
Alright. We'll move on to public hearings, and there aren't any of those, so we don't have to open or close it even. And that brings us to discussion items. We have zoning code rewrite. Discussion item 7A.
On your desk is information I handed out tonight that has been prepared by Andrew, reviewed by myself. I told him he didn't need to come tonight to go through this. And we won't go through item by item, page by page, but just to kind of lay the groundwork here, what I've handed out tonight are the new proposed zoning regulations for the C-1 district, which is the downtown, and the C-2 district, which currently is the B-2 district. When it comes to naming the districts, don't worry about that, but again, this is following the Minnesota State template, which uses C-1 and C-2. So C-1 is downtown, C-2 is primarily the South Highway 52 corridor, or the current B-2 district. What I want you all to look at between now and the next meeting on both of these ordinances, or these districts, excuse me, are the permitted uses. And for the C-1, that's in item B on the first page, permitted uses and structures. I'll tell you that, again, there's no need to list every possible use, but we want to certainly list enough to give a reasonable flavor of what's really allowed within that C-1 district. This doesn't differ much from the current B-1 district, the current downtown zoning. It's pretty similar. But again, the purpose, the primary purpose of the downtown area is to, again, encourage and allow a wide range of retail, commercial-type land use and businesses in the downtown. One thing that isn't part of this at the moment is the historic overlay district. We have that now that kind of covers up the existing B-1 area. We will carry forward a historic overlay district for this as well, but that's going to take a little bit more effort to kind of rewrite that. There's some things that I think we'd like to tweak and maybe make a little bit clearer for that. So there isn't any historic overlay on this right now that'll be coming in the future. But take a look at Section B at your leisure, and we can talk about that either tonight or at a future meeting. Page two. I'm going to point out item D, which is conditional use. You may remember with the residential districts, we're proposing under the state template zoning to change how we handle conditional use permits. It's a little bit broader, a little bit more flexibility, a little bit less rigid compared to our current ordinance, which specifies the type of land uses that have to be reviewed by conditional use permit. Now, this has some of those things specified, but really, it's like our R-1, R-2. We will consider certain uses that aren't listed as permitted as conditional, but we'll look at them under kind of this new language, and the language is the same in the R-1, R-2, C-1, and C-2. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility, and arguably from my vantage point, isn't quite as rigid as our current ordinance. But if you look at items 1 through 5 on Section D, those are as listed under state law as conditional uses. And I think it bears mentioning here that D-1, one and two family dwellings and multi, multiple family dwellings, that's a residential use. If we're going to have a residential use in the downtown area, if we're going to allow that, it would be subject to the issuance of a conditional use permit. So I couldn't walk in tomorrow and say I want to take a building that's zoned, C-1 in this case, and I want to turn it into a residential use. I can't just do it. I've got to come before the city, before the Planning Commission, at a public hearing, your recommendation, and council approval in order to allow me to have a residential use in the downtown. It's not that we don't want to have some residential uses, particularly the upper levels of the commercial buildings. It's just that there's going to have to be a conditional use permit to attain that right. The non-residential licensed daycare facilities, if someone wants to run a daycare facility, a commercial daycare facility downtown, it could be allowed in the C-1 district by conditional use permit. And again, the primary reason for that is the kind of use where there's traffic coming and going, picking up and dropping off, maybe some parking, maybe some other things that would probably be better handled under a conditional use permit. Outdoor storage, I'll pick on a hardware store. If a hardware store downtown wanted to have an outside yard or an outside area where they would display items for retail sale, lawn mowers as an example, that would be okay, but under this provision, it would have to be okayed under a conditional use permit. So you'd get a chance as a commission to kind of look at the proposed development plan, see where the outside storage is going to be, see what the impact of that is to neighboring properties, and make a decision under the conditional use permit. Item four, the drive-through a bank, a restaurant. If there's going to be a drive-through facility in a downtown area, which again is a fairly densely developed area, drive-throughs can be a little tricky, and because of that, they would be looked at here as part of a conditional use permit. So again, if I was going to develop one, I would have to come here with my site plan. We'd have a public hearing. The neighbors would give a chance to at least come in and comment to the extent they wish to, and if I'm going to get the drive-through, it would be subject to a conditional use permit. And I think that's reasonable in the downtown. Number five, the sidewalk cafes. We've got that now in our current ordinance, where if it's 16 seats or more, we went through this with Chuggers and the access, the door when he built his new deck. Sidewalk cafes, outdoor dining would also be subject to the issuance of a conditional use permit. And again, I think there's some reason for that depending on, you know, the particulars of the proposal. So the only conditional uses here in the C-1 are the ones that are listed there, 1 through 5. If we're going to have any others, we'll need to talk about that and get your input on that, and talk about adding additional conditional use opportunities in the downtown. Item E, lot requirements and setbacks, those are no different than they are right now. The one advantage from a development perspective in the downtown is that there are no property setbacks for buildings. So if you've got a bare lot in the downtown, you want to build a new building, you don't have to set it away from the property line by 5 feet, 10 feet, 15 feet, like you would a residence in an R-1 district. There's no setback requirements. And again, it's because of the dense, the dense nature of the downtown, the existing buildings, et cetera. So that, that doesn't change. Page three. I call your attention only to Section I, which are these conditional use standards. Again, I mentioned earlier, this new ordinance, to the extent we continue down this road with the new ordinance, our conditional use permit guidelines, again, I think are a little bit more flexible than our, than our current ordinance, and give a little bit more leeway to the, to the property owner who wishes to get a permit to develop, and to the Planning Commission who wishes to either approve or maybe more regulate someone's proposal. And it gives some greater flexibility here. And that's again, under, under the state, the state template. Item J, specific standards. Turning the page one more. What Section 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 do is they take those five uses that I just talked about, if you're going to build a residence in the downtown, if you're going to do a daycare facility, if you're going to have outside storage, if you're going to do a drive-through, if you're going to do a sidewalk cafe. These are more specific standards that apply specifically to those uses. So what we would look at is if someone came in and wanted to do a sidewalk cafe, we'd turn the page again and go to item number 5 on the bottom of the page. Should have numbered these pages. But their sidewalk cafes, outdoor eating and dining areas accessory to a principal use. We need to look at then those conditions with a specific proposal that comes in for that. And again, I think they're fairly straightforward. And that's it for the C-1. I mean, it's, again, it doesn't have the historic overlay, but I'll tell you, if we compared these provisions versus our existing provisions, this is a lot cleaner, I think, a lot more friendly to us both, private and public sector, I think. It gives, again, a little bit more flexibility, and I think that's something we've talked about in the past as we've, as we've been discussing revising these, the current ordinance. If you can turn to the next page then, C-2, commercial district.
Where does the deck fall in in relation to?
The deck would be an accessory use.
Okay.
So any, anyone who wants to put a deck on would be an accessory use.
Okay.
Yep. And typically, those are going to be permitted.
Okay.
Yep.
I was just wondering, you had sidewalk cafes in there, talking about entrances or openings and that type of thing, so I was just wondering.
The sidewalk cafe to the Chuggers.
Mm-hmm.
Current ordinance and proposed use. What issue he ran into was we have in our current ordinance that if there's more than 16 seats for outdoor dining.
Mm-hmm.
He needed to get a conditional use permit.
Oh.
With the conditional use permit, we all kind of collectively discovered that we had the language in the ordinance that required him to only access the deck from the 4th Street door.
Right.
Goes into Chuggers. You couldn't come up the backside because of the ordinance. That's been changed, and it's also been, been changed in this.
Okay.
So we don't have that principal access issue like we did, did with Chuggers. Now, if somebody wanted to build a deck and it wasn't for, for dining purposes, then it would just be an accessory use. If it was for dining purposes like Chuggers in this ordinance, it would still be a conditional use, like it was before. It's just that we don't have in this ordinance, just like we changed in the last ordinance, that principal entrance issue.
Uh-huh.
That's been changed.
Okay, thanks.
The C-2, commercial district. I'm not going to go through each one of these, because again, the format's the same. The one, one thing I personally like about the, the state template is it's pretty uniformly consistent from district to district, land use to land use. If you've got an industrial district, or a commercial district, or residential district, the format follows pretty consistently from one district to the other. Our current ordinance does that kind of, but it does it in a much more extensive, long-winded way. So the C-2 district here, again, I want you to take a look at, when you get a chance later, is look at the permitted uses and the conditional uses. And what I'll tell you, the big difference between the downtown, the C-1, and the C-2 in this ordinance, and to the same degree our current ordinance, is that if it's allowed in the downtown, it's going to be allowed out in the, along the highway, and then some. There's some uses that require larger land areas and implement dealer. An implement dealer's not going to be allowed downtown, but an implement dealer would be allowed out along the highway because there's more land, there's more outside storage, it's a better location in this community, given our physical development patterns and in most communities, to get those kind of more intensive land users out along the highway where there's more land. So what'll happen here in this proposal, or this revised language, if it's allowed in the downtown, it's going to be allowed out in the corridor, but then again, there's going to be some additional commercial uses that ties back to our industrial zone that says, if it's not heavy manufacturing, you know, we're not going to have ABC widget manufacturer out in the, along the highway in the C-2, not as a permitted use. They're going to have to go to the industrial area. But if it's a, a less intensive quasi-industrial user, a warehouse distribution center, an assembly business, I don't know about a Gemini situation there, because there's kind of a combination of many things there, but if it's not a heavy manufacturing-type use, but it's a commercial use, they're probably going to be allowed out, out in the, in the C-2 area along the highway. So again, there's a fairly broad list of uses that are going to be allowed out in the, along the highway. Remember, we adopted the new zoning district, the southeast campus planned unit development around the hospital site? That's a separate zone. We're not affecting that. That property's already zoned. We're going to pull that zoning forward in this new district, but that's a separate zone outside of this C-2. It's already in existence, and it'll be pulled forward into this new ordinance. So this, the C-2 doesn't talk about that because that's a separate district. And for someone who wanted to request that kind of zoning for their property in the future, if, if more property is annexed to the city, and the owners of the property would like to pursue a southeast campus PUD zoning rather than the C-2, they'll be able to do it in this new ordinance, because we'll bring that, that ordinance forward. So the work that we did earlier this year, and I guess starting last year with the hospital, that kind of ordinance will, will also be in our, in our new zoning district. The setback requirements, everything else in the C-2 is, is, you know, pretty much a mirror image of what our B-2 district is. So I think the important thing for the, for the commissioners is to, at your leisure, is kind of look at these uses, kind of draw the distinction in your own minds between what you think you'd like to see in the downtown versus out in the highway. And then we can talk about that maybe at the, at the next meeting, if you've got some ideas, some questions, you know, about that. But I think, again, it gets a little bit cumbersome and a little bit complicated to go through item by item, page by page, because so many things kind of move around in these, in these zoning ordinances that we end up probably all tripping over each other to do that. But again, look at the land use, and if you've got any other questions about the other provisions, be sure to ask me. But that's, that's why I wanted to bring your attention tonight. So if you've got some questions now, we can talk about that. If not, we will bring this back, and probably another district or two at, at the next meeting in, in May. So it's a lot of information. Any questions at, at this point, anything I've said or anything you've seen in there that jumps out? There's not an answer yet for the residential business district, the one up here, here, and up here. But as I've talked with, with Andrew and Ron more about that, more and more, we're maybe convincing each other that rather than, than when we get to that area, rather than have a single zoning district covering acres and acres of land with many, many different land uses like we've got right now, we're starting to pull out some neighborhoods. And a good example of that is the malt house, and when we go across, east across 20, and we get into Cannon Equipment and Berquist, and, and we get up the hill to Gemini, there's, there's some industrial zoning in and around that area already, and maybe what we're going to end up doing is, is taking that residential business district and taking those existing land uses that have been in their current location for a long, long time, and if we can get enough of them kind of packaged together, maybe we just go back and rezone, say, in this example, we have those areas all zone industrial. Unless, when we then look at the map, we say, you know what, we're really not comfortable with, with forever keeping industrial uses in, in the areas that I've talked about, and if we want to change that, this would be the time to do that and come up with a different zoning application. But the more I've talked with, with Ron and, and Andrew about that, it just seems like we're going to be able to pare down that residential business district some, and, and maybe use some of these existing zones, if we can group some properties. And then with kind of whatever's left, maybe we will have kind of a residential business district zone that we haven't looked at yet. So I think for, for this area still, there's, there's some questions, but the more we get into these, these individual districts, the more conversation I'm having with, with Ron and Andrew about, you know, addressing, you know, this situation over here in terms of a, of a zone. Just not quite ready to concede that we will or won't come back with a residential business mixed-use kind of zone for this area. I, I'm just not sold on that quite yet, so we'll keep working there. But, but look at these, and we'll keep moving forward with the other districts, and like I say, if there's things in here you, you don't understand, or you don't like, or you want to talk about changing, that's what we'll do. If there aren't any questions on that, then Dan, we can certainly go to the.
Resolution 2013-2.
At the last meeting, this is, we've got an application by Ed Reimer to change our current B-2 district to allow for the self-mini storage units. And at our last meeting, we agreed that I would go back and talk with Ed Reimer about the, the standards we talked about at our last meeting, and just kind of see where he's kind of at in terms of wanting to proceed under those particular standards. I mentioned a bill earlier. I, I talked to Ed several times. We shared some language back and forth, and I'd like to kind of walk you through how I arrived at, at the language that I've got. This way. And talk about that. It might look a little bit more complicated than it is, but it's kind of piecing things together. Now, Bill, if you could help with the, with the lights, maybe that's, you've all got this, but I think it might be helpful to keep that in front of us. There we go. You all have this included in your, in your packet. O'Reilly Auto, the Cannon Mall, here's north going into downtown, south going out to the New Interchange. The area that Mr. Reimer's talking about developing these mini-storage facilities, if he proceeds, is, is right in this area, kind of north and west of the mall. Here's Highway 52 over here. So maybe the one advantage we've got when we're talking about language is we've got at least some sense of, of the area that he's talking about wanting to develop this kind of use. I did speak with him about the area south, and that doesn't come up much here, but, you know, this area down here that he also owns, and I just explained to him that with the topography there, the drainage there, the uncertainty with MinDOT now with regards to the overpass, and whether or not this back service road is going to stay, or is it going to go. I mean, there's, there's some questions there, and, and I think he agreed that for now, maybe he'll leave this area down in the south for a later date, and maybe concentrate more up on the, on the northwest side. So what I did is I took, and you can see that in my memo to the commission, under item 7B on my memorandum, what I did is I just took the existing language of the ordinance, which you've all seen before, for these mini-storage facilities as per the language that allows them in an industrial district, doesn't allow it in the B-2. Mr. Reimer would like us to amend the B-2 to allow mini-storage units in, in the area that he's proposing to develop. So what I did is I just took the existing language, and starting out with item D, and then 1 through 11 are the existing standards in the ordinance, and then underneath each one of those 11, in italicized font, I put some language that Mr. Reimer and I ultimately evolved into kind of tentatively agreeing to bring to the commission tonight. And I want to kind of lay that out item by item for you to kind of get your reaction and, and direction. So let's start with number one, and I think we go through the first one, the rest of them, we'll, we'll follow pretty quickly in terms of the methodology that I used here. But the current ordinance says in item D-1 that at least 25% of the site has to be open green space, which is sodded and intensely landscaped in accordance with a plan approved by the city council, current language. In my conversations with Mr. Reimer, he said he would be willing to accept something like this, or he feels that it's, it's reasonable to accept something like this if seeding rather than sodding was an option, and that rather than intensely landscaped, we talked about reasonable landscaping. And then finally, he's looking for a credit, if you will, under this provision for the storm drainage retention pond that in all likelihood he's going to have to build to control drainage of a use of this type. So what that means is, if we look over again in the area where he's proposing to build the units, he would have to come into us with a plan that showed his layout, that showed in, in item D-1, his landscaped area, what's seeded or what's sodded if it isn't changed, what's landscaped, what isn't, reasonably landscaped or intensely landscaped, depending on the language. But, but in terms of the, the storm drainage, he is going to have to provide some way of controlling all the storm drainage from what's going to be a fairly intensive development in terms of hard surface. There's going to be blacktop, there's going to be gravel, there's going to be buildings, all within a fairly concentrated area, and that's going to generate some storm drainage. He's, he's got a legal responsibility to control that. One way of controlling that would be to build a retention pond. So let's say that a retention pond hypothetically is over in this area. What he's saying is, if, if his drainage plan that would be approved by the city allowed for storm drainage to be held and, and cleaned up in a, in a retention pond over here, he would like credit for that, because that's not going to be blacktop, it's going to be a seeded, turfed, depress, depressed area retention pond that's going to hold water. And if it's an acre, as an example, what he's looking for is, is some credit under this 25% green area provision. And I think that's reasonable. I think that's reasonable. So what we've tried to do here is come up with a language that says, okay, you've got to have some, some green areas on your development, the 25% is still the minimum standard here. If we go with, with what he's agreeing to, that we would allow seeding or sodding and reasonable landscaping rather than intense landscaping, and we allowed a credit towards this 25% being this storm drainage pond, that he would like to see something like that as a provision, that if it's in the ordinance, he would be comfortable with that. And I've, like I say, this, we, we kind of evolved into some of this language. I drafted things originally, he commented back, I commented back, we talked on the phone, this is where we're at. So the point of this is, if we're going to go ahead and we're going to make a recommendation on that, on that resolution number two, 2013 number two, what I would do after we get input from the commission and a consensus, I would then draft resolution 2013-2 to have Exhibit A, which would reflect whatever the consensus or the agreement of the commission turns out to be. So as an example, if you, if you said in item D-1, yeah, we're okay with, with that revised italicized language, I would rewrite number 1 to allow sodded or seeding as an option, I would strike intensely landscaped and put reasonable landscaping, and I would add the pervious surface credit and make that the new condition for number 1. Okay?
Let me see if I understand that.
Yep.
The, the storm drainage area would be considered as part of the 25%, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Yep, yep, yep. So if, if, if you were going to make that recommendation, then again, I would, I would tailor Exhibit A, which would be attached to that resolution that would go to the city council to say, okay, in this example, the new ordinance standard would be written with these changes.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be the recommendation of the commission. And I'm giving that just as a, as a format explanation. It becomes much simpler, number 2, if we go there, no building shall be located closer than 25 feet to each other. That's fine. That's, that's, that's a good standard, a reasonable standard, and, and Mr. Reimer has no problem with that. So there would be no changes to number 2. Number 3, existing standard, no single building shall be greater than 150 feet in length. He's okay with that, so there wouldn't be any changes there. So I would follow through with the italicized response here to those standards and, and write the new ordinance accordingly, if that's the desire of the, of the commission. So with that said, let me get into the, the fire safety one, because those are the, several of the fire safety ones. Item number, number 5, all structures are to be located within 200 feet of a fire hydrant. The state fire marshal division requires a minimum of 300 feet, not 200 feet. So if we're going to change that from 200 feet to 300 feet, the state fire marshal codes would line up with that provision. I mean, if the state fire marshal's okay with it, I'm okay with it. The reality is, we've got an existing fire hydrant that's down in this location. Now, we've got a water main down in here, so we've got a existing fire hydrant down here that's clearly within a couple hundred feet, 200 feet of this area. But I don't have a final site plan, so I don't know what he's going to do, but I'm guessing that if, if the, if we change it to 300 feet, that the plan will be drafted in part around that 300-foot di, dimension, or if it isn't, there's going to have to be another hydrant put in. And that would be the deal.
Each building is within 300 feet?
No.
Or the site itself?
The site itself, yeah. So, and, and what I would do with, with the, the plan, if we get one from Mr. Reimer, is I sit down with, with, with John Miller, we, we provide this information to him as the fire chief, and then we kind of say, okay, you know, this is what they're doing, here's your access, here's how you're going to get, get in here to fight, you know, fight the fire if there is one, and, and we actually look for that, that approval too, so. Item number 6, the fire suspension, suppression system. The fire suspension, suppression system. I included with the packet John Miller's comments. These get into the depths of the fire code. And just suffice it to say that if, if you look back at what John Miller got from the state fire marshal, and again, John's our local fire tree, chief. The question about the, this particular system is one that's going to be answered only if and when we get a, we get a specific plan for a project. So what I'm basically saying is that if a fire suppression system is required by the state fire marshal or by, or by the, by, by the building code, it is what it is, and, and that's going to be a condition that we're going to, we're going to uphold. We, we can't do less than that. So if the plan comes in, again, depending what the plan is, if it's going to be required for the system by the state fire marshal or by the, the state building code, you're going to have to provide it. Isn't required, it's not going to be required by us.
I think the next code change is going to be down to forty-five hundred feet. And I know on the residential, for sure, on the next code change, they're, they're for sure doing forty-five hundred square feet. So if you've got a hundred and fifty foot long building by twenty feet deep, you're going to be over.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and those things are going to change, obviously, and that's why I think with our zoning ordinance and our local code standards, we should just follow the state requirements, and, and this would do that. So I think that's, number six is probably okay. Number seven on the next page. The two thousand square foot and then the separation with the firewall. The build, the state building code has certain standards, again, that are going to require firewall improvements in structures like this. And it's not going to be the two thousand feet, square feet here necessarily. It's again, it's going to depend on the overall development that's proposed. And I think right now, the code is somewhere around twenty-four thousand square feet, I think, for, for something like this. So there again, I think our provision relative to item number seven, if it's required by the, the, the state building code or the state fire marshal, it's going to have to be provided.
Right.
I have a question on, while we're kind of close to materials. Out in the industrial park out there, in our ordinances, we have where basically pole barns and that type can't be used. Does that apply in the B one now also?
B one or B two?
Or B two.
B two, yeah, the B two. We, there, there's a separate set of performance standards within our current zoning ordinance that go beyond. It, it's probably more an aesthetic code. As an example, in our industrial park, what it says is that at least half of the building, at least fifty percent of the building that fronts a public right of way. So if you're on Cannon Industrial Boulevard in the industrial park, and there's a, there's a building, the front of the building that, that faces the street and you're on the street, under current code, or at least two thousand six, at least half of the front of that building has to be something other than metal, and it's got to be something more aesthetic, glass. It can be masonry, it can be combination of things. But we don't have that same aesthetic code for the other three sides, you know, of a building in, in the park. For commercial buildings out in the B two area, we've got standards. Cannon Power Sports met them with their, both their addition with the warehouse and the addition with the showroom. When Bob Banks built his building, you know, he, he was able to meet those two. So we've got a different set of standards out, out along the B two area as opposed to industrial park, so. And we'll carry those or something similar to those performance standards probably forward. Here, the only thing we've got for looks would be item ten. Look at item number ten here, Dave, and this, this gives you kind of example. This, this is where we've got the, the brick or stone for those parts, portions of the mini storage facilities that, that front or back up to a residence or residential development. There needs to be a little bit different treatment of the facade. What I've talked with, with Mr. Reimer about is that in this case, he's not proposing that the buildings be brick, natural stone, wood or stucco. That isn't proposed for this kind of building. So he's looking for something as, as an alternative to that. So what we evolved to was in this case, there needs to be, to, to meet this aesthetic standard, there needs to be, if it's not a building material, there needs to be some type of screening, some type of landscaping, some type of fencing, something that minimizes the, the impact of what probably will be some type of a metal building or buildings up next to the, to the homes. And the homes in this case are South Pines, does border on the north side of the site up in here. Now, there is, South Pines. There is an existing fence that was probably built, I'm guessing, in conjunction with that development.
MW had to put that in there.
And there could be some maintenance there. Should be some maintenance there.
I guess.
Should, should be some maintenance. So I mean, I, until we see a plan, it, 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 it's hard to put language in here that really says specifically, this is what needs to be done in these circumstances. But what I've talked with, with Mr. Reimer about is, is there needs to be something, and if it isn't meeting this standard of, of construction for the buildings themselves, alternatively, there needs to be, you know, some type of screening mechanism. And I think that's where it comes back into the landscaping issue. And so it would be required here, if he, if he does pursue this, he'll have to bring in a site plan that shows us where the buildings sit out here, what the buildings are going to be built of, what's he going to do up in this area to kind of offset the, the view from South Pines into the north end of, of his building or buildings? So he'll need to show that. And we would simply have here in, in, in item number ten, then, if we were going to change that, is we would, we would allow an alternative. I wouldn't necessarily take that language out, but give an alternative. If you're not going to do the, the masonry buildings, you know, alternatively, you can, you can have some type of screening, buffering, you know, that type of thing. So we would change that language some. And I'm, I mean, I'm okay with that. It's, in, in this instance, for this use in this location, to have one face, the north face of what could be three or four larger buildings be constructed out of these materials, eh. You know, I, I don't know. I, I don't know if that makes much sense to me. I, I think there could be other ways to, to more minimize that, and, and again, with some birmingham, with some landscaping, with some fencing, that might actually look better than, than having one wall of one of several buildings.
Maybe some trees that don't get too big.
With mostly garage doors. With some stone in between, I don't know, you're the builder, you tell me, but I, I don't know. So I, I, I think I'm generally okay with, with, with number ten, but that was jumping ahead, Dave, to, to kind of your point. Back to number eight. The driveways being blacktop or concrete. The existing storage facilities we have around town don't necessarily meet that standard entirely. I think there's good reason to have blacktop or, or something other than obviously sod and preferably at least a class five. But there, there needs to be a hard surface, and his proposal, and I'm kind of okay with this kind of, that he's basically saying that the drive-through, drive-around the units, if you're going to go there and use unit number ten, you're going to be on blacktop in between the buildings, but not necessarily all the way around the site. And he's also anticipating that along with this project, that he'll have some open areas that aren't buildings that could be leased as storage. If I've got a, an RV, or I've got a boat, or I've got whatever it is, I could maybe still, if I didn't want to put it in a building, I could still lease land area from him to do that. And, and he said if that's what he's going to do, then having again, some blacktop surfacing there, a hard surface there rather than just, you know, gravel is, is probably okay. So it's kind of one of those in-betweens. And if we had a real site plan really before us, it might be a little bit easier to say, well, okay, that makes sense, or it doesn't. So that one.
I thought part of our zoning stuff with what everybody was doing, and even up on top of the hill, I thought we had to put blacktop on everything now. Like down at Interstate, they went in and made them blacktop, everything when the city annexed all that. And some of the people haven't quite followed through.
Some have not quite followed through, yes, and that's, and that's.
You know, some of the driveways around town, I thought, you know, when Dave was here, I know he was over aggressive about it, but I thought that was something that back in two thousand four or five, we had, as things got annexed in, we were going to cooperate with everybody and eventually try to get to a hard surface type deal and not so much limestone.
Yes. In two thousand six, the new ordinance definitely specifies more blacktop rather than less. The challenge, there's, there's many challenges at this point, and not the least of which is if we go back to this example, it's one thing to have a bare land site where nothing's really been done, and start with that in terms of blacktop and drainage and landscaping. It's a real difficult challenge now to go back in the annexed area and take a number of those developments that were built in the township.
You have one very close there that's a problem one, but you wouldn't, I don't know. You couldn't blacktop it because you'd make it worse for everybody else.
Yeah, and that's, so what, what I've done in terms of administering the ordinance is, and again, Cannon Power Sports, Bob Banks' building, we've had a couple of others out there that have done some things where we've taken a stronger position on drainage more so than blacktop because it's, it's, it's hard now to go back in any kind of cost-effective measure and kind of fix what was never done originally when it comes to blacktop, because that creates drainage issues and where are you going to go with it? And at some point now, all of a sudden, you've got, you know, this huge expenditure, and you've got underground storm sewer pipe, you know, that was never there. And so it's, we're, we're kind of administering in a, in a more reasonable way as best we can on a case-by-case basis. So the ones that didn't get done, in some cases, they were conditions of permits that were never finished. We haven't gone back and, 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 and forced those to occur. But we do, like with the, the new hospital, if you go out to Lawrence Meats out in the industrial park, with a couple of other projects that have occurred out in that area, we're, we're now taking a much firmer stance on, on storm drainage management and, and dealing with, with hard surfaces and.
Well, I think up here, probably we would want to see a little bit more blacktop just to manage the dust and the other. You know, since you have a residential area right there, you're not going to want thirty neighbors every time it gets dry in the middle of the summer yelling and screaming at everybody.
That's what I was wondering about, going to like growing blacktop if that's, if that would be an option or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Versus classified.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, it's, it's with, with the dust and traffic.
I know, in front of our shop out there too, it's in the summertime, it's just a big dust cloud out there.
Unless you're spraying it down every, every month.
And we'll get, as we get into item B below, the traffic control, that's going to be a good example of some of the challenges that we have now kind of after the fact. But again, I think with, with isolating this area, if, if we go ahead and we modify the ordinance or amend the ordinance to allow this kind of use under these kind of terms and conditions, we will have an opportunity with an application to then specifically look at the details of a plan and say, okay, under these eleven or twelve or thirteen or fourteen standards, whatever it turns out to be, this is how we're interpreting these things, and this is what we're going to recommend as a planning commission to the council to make sure that you, Mr. or Mrs. Developer, control your dust, control the traffic, end up with a project that looks better rather than worse, that fits in the neighborhood as best it can. And we'll have that ability under the conditional use, you know, in, in, in these regards.
Dave, on the, on that number eight that you're saying, his statement acceptable, provided that parking areas may not be required? Well, I mean, wouldn't you be, be parking in front of your units? I mean, you know, I don't understand exactly how that would work.
It's, it's, it's the parking too, and I, maybe I misspoke a little bit before my clarification. It's, it's the parking areas where he would have other outside storage, not inside. All of the areas in between the buildings, the, where you're going to access that would be blacktop, but the areas beyond that, he's not sure that he wants to blacktop the entire site.
Yeah, I got it, thanks.
So if he's got, I mean, we could, we could go with Jay's example, or, I mean, potentially he could have just a, a turf, a harder surface turf, depending what he's proposing to, to park in the open areas outside of the buildings. And we don't know that yet. But that was kind of his point, is that gee, I, Mr. Reimer may have some areas within my site that I want to have the ability to, to lease out for storage of things that aren't going to be in buildings. And do I really need to blacktop all that area? Well, I'm not sure we want to necessarily have to force him to blacktop. It might not be good to blacktop, depending what it is he wants to put there. And we don't know that yet.
And so that you can control the, how big of a drainage pond he's got to put in, maybe you want some, something that's going to soak in a little bit too, have some little bit of area anyway. Then you can downsize your pond a tad, which would give him more development and more stuff for us to tax.
This resolution, is it just specifically designed for this application?
It will apply to this application, but also if it goes into the ordinance in the B two, and if it's carried forward in the C two that we talked about tonight, and we had, and we talked about last week about, or last meeting about, if we do it now under the current ordinance for this project, it will create the opportunity for Mr. Reimer to come in then with a conditional use permit before we get the new ordinance adopted. If we want to carry forward this language into the new ordinance, we can do it or not in what we talked about tonight as being the C two. We may say, and it's kind of a unique set of circumstances here, I, I too am a little bit concerned about putting mini storage units as a, as a conditional use throughout the entire current B two area. It's a lot of land area. You know, market realities are such that we're not going to get eight thousand, you know, units out there. But if it goes in the ordinance, we could. So what we're going to have is we're going to have a window of opportunity between what happens here and what happens with our new zoning to make a decision about this use. And with the new ordinance, we may say, you know what, maybe we really don't like that as much as we thought, and Mr. Reimer will be fine, because he'll either get approval or he won't if this goes forward. But we'll have the opportunity to, to pull that back if, if we choose to. And that's just a unique set of timing that is not going to happen probably again. But yeah, if it goes in now, Bruce, whatever conditions go in, anyone who owns property out in the, in the B two area could come in and, and say, we want to do this.
Although really, I guess, I think this kind of thing would make sense in a B two as opposed to, or like a C two as opposed to a C one.
Yeah.
You know, it's really not an industrial use.
I agree.
It's not manufacturing really of any better, no.
It's a commercial, it's a commercial use.
Right, right.
It's a pretty non-intensive, non-problem-causing use.
Most of the time, if you go through any one given storage facility, you might see one or two garage doors open. But whenever I've gone, I used to store my snowmobile in one, and we never saw anybody out there. You know, we'd go out in the summertime and work on them, change the belts, the plugs, you know, get them ready.
Yep. And so I think, you know, that's, that's kind of the, the saving grace here in terms of the, of the use that we're talking about. It's not that intensive, and, and the market is such that we have a fair number of units existing in this community already. There's also rental opportunities at the fairgrounds for space. I mean, there's, there's opportunities to rent storage space around town.
Yeah.
I don't know how many units he's talking about here, but if he does go forward, there's another set of new units in the marketplace. Will there be another one, and another one, and another one? I don't know.
I would think it probably, market demands would probably determine how much is really needed. I suspect there's probably going to be not a lot, I don't believe that's a growth industry anymore.
And again, for, for whatever reason, they're, they're allowed only in our industrial zones right now. And I don't know if that was before two thousand six, if the ordinance is before the new one came in, if that was the case, or if it was just changed with the two thousand six, I don't know, but.
I think that's where they just happened to end up being.
Yeah.
You know, down by Lawrence's down there and then.
Well, what was safe, sir, what is that one zone?
That one's not in.
That's not in the city.
Oh, okay, sure. Yep.
So it's not, it's not my biggest.
That's going to disappear out with the exchange and everything. That's gonna disappear out with the exchange and everything, isn't it? Or is that all stay there?
No, I think it'd stay, it'll stay.
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah.
It'll, you know, go around it, the roads kinda go around it according to the map over there.
They may have purch, highway department may have purchased a little. I know they had to purchase just a little bit of land from Randy Retzickel that he owns in there. I don't know about safes if they did too, but yeah, otherwise, I mean, that's, that's three parcels in there together that will be, Highway 52 will be on the west side, and the new frontage road will be on the east side. And there'll be an access road off of the new frontage road to get into there, or a driveway, yeah.
But safes is a good one on the dust control, summer when it gets dry out there. It's terrible.
So you're asking us to recommend this to the council?
Yeah, I think again, if you're comfortable with that, the only other thing I'll say, because we talked about it last time, are two things. One is, we talked about security last time, and whether or not this development ought to be fully secured by fence. What Mr. Reimer's proposing to do is it will be secured by a camera security system, but he's not intending to fully enclose one or two or three or four or five buildings, whatever he's gonna build here with, with security fencing, so that's one thing.
Well, he'll know if that's an issue.
Yeah. And the second thing was, you know, the traffic patterns, and we talked last time about with the mall being there and kind of all these fringe developments that have already occurred. Another development, I don't care what it is, over in this corner, it's hard to go back now, I was saying earlier, it's hard to go back now and kinda direct traffic throughout this site into certain areas because it's, it is what it is, and it's gonna stay what it is for a while. So I, I've struggled a little bit with the conversation we had at the last meeting about directing traffic patterns somehow from twenty-four into the site and keeping them away from, you know, the other traffic that's in and out of the mall. I've kind of agreed to agree with Mr. Reimer that short of curb and gutter and medians and this, that, and the other thing, it's gonna be difficult to do that. So his point was, you know, what you said, Dan, is the use and the access of these kind of units tends to vary. It's not the nine-to-five sort of thing necessarily, that it's after hours, before hours. And so the traffic patterns coming in and out of there might be a little bit different than the other operations that are there, maybe. And then the second thing, what he did say is he is gonna try to develop a plan that kinda centralizes or directs access to the units into one or two areas so that at least the folks who use these facilities, they gotta target. So they're going towards a target rather than just all over the place. I don't know that that will be tremendously effective, but like I say, short of building roads with curb and gutter or medians, or we can paint sand barrels orange and put flags on them. Short of doing that kinda stuff, it's gonna be tough now to really effectively, you know...
Grabbing straws for that even.
Direct, direct traffic there, so...
Couldn't you just do a one-way flow chart, either clockwise or counterclockwise?
Internally, they can, to the site, but getting to the site is, yeah.
Paint some arrows on the street.
Part of the site plan will reflect that.
Yeah, I think we'll be...
Yeah, that'd really help.
It doesn't keep people from not driving through parking spots, but it kinda gives a clue.
Makes a flow anyway.
Right.
Well, again, if it proves to be an issue, he'll be the first to know because there'll be issues that he'll have to deal with with his renters.
He'll be ringing here and David.
Yeah, well, he's responsible for his renters, right? So if there's a problem, he gets the call, right?
Yeah. I just think, and again, as I've wrestled with this through conversations with him to a certain degree and just my own thoughts, I'm sure they're shared by you folks. The developments there, it's not perfect in terms of traffic patterns around the multiple uses out there. You know, we could say no to development, now keep this property vacant, you know? That's not gonna change the existing patterns out there much. If we say yes with some conditions, that'll change the pattern some. If we say yes with a condition that you're really gonna have curb and gutter and drives and medians and landscaping, well, then nothing's gonna happen. So it's, it's again, it's that, well, that earlier conversation about it's gone far enough already that it's difficult to take any project, I don't care if it's here or somewhere else, say, okay, now we're gonna fix all these things. We're gonna fix all the storm drains, we're gonna fix all the traffic bands, we're gonna fix, you know, all these other things. It's problematic.
You mentioned vehicles earlier. I mean, what regulates the type and how many vehicles can be stored?
In the units themselves?
Not in the units themselves. Because you mentioned something about...
What regulates that now?
Yeah.
Nothing.
Okay.
So ever many you can cram into space.
Well, I would think the site plan would have to be...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if it's not gonna be enclosed, it would...
They'll wanna know what they, they'll wanna know ahead of time what they can do.
Wouldn't be fenced, but internally, I mean, you'll have the minimum twenty-five-foot driving lanes between, so we'll meet all of our safety and reasonable accessibility traveling through these units.
Right.
So that'll all be required, and that'll be fine. But getting there to the site, to the development, to your unit number six, to get there, you're gonna do whatever you're gonna do to get there, and there's no control.
Well, what I meant though was that if they stored, and I thought you had said something about vehicles being stored outside, now is that...
Okay, yeah.
Is it gonna start looking like a junkyard? People driving by fifty-two.
Yes, and that's why we get back into these conditions, and I think we're covered here. If we see a plan to say, okay, we're gonna allow you, you know, X number of mini-storage units, and then you've got this acre, half acre over here that you're telling us you wanna park vehicles, and what does that really mean? Where are they? How many are they? Or how are you gonna get to? What's it gonna look like? Do we have to screen these things off either to the residents to the north or even the traffic on the west? And we'll have the ability to do that once we know what it is.
Okay.
Overnight parking for the semis?
Yeah, yeah. So I think, you know, with some adjustments on these provisions, I think I'm comfortable in, you know, putting something together if you wanna go ahead and recommend that to the council, and then it'd be up to him. If the ordinance gets amended, then he's gotta decide, does he wanna come in for a conditional use permit? If he does, we'll schedule a public hearing, and he'll bring us a real plan, and then we'll talk about specifics under these adjusted provisions.
I kinda think we're, it's worthwhile to go ahead with. If we sit on our hands and don't do anything, it's gonna sit there empty forever, and we'll have nothing. Might as well try to get something going, I would think. And I don't, I don't see the market wanting another couple thousand storage units in the city of Cannon Falls, so I'm not too worried about that, I guess personally.
Well, I think if that's the, you know, the feeling of the whole, again, if we look at Resolution 2013-2, it doesn't have an Exhibit A to it. Exhibit A would be what I would develop based on this conversation and that language. And if we went ahead with that, you'd be recommending to the council that the B2 district, the current B2 district, be amended to allow these self-mini-storage units subject to these eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve conditions.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for Resolution 2013-2. And that was Mr. Longton and Mr. Price second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is Planning Commission Member Comments.
Where are we on the development on the other side of the turkey farm? How's that going?
The Goodyear County Planning Commission meeting that was originally scheduled was postponed because of weather. They met a week or so ago now, the planning commission, and they're recommending to the county board that it be denied. So the city council had requested that the county not approve it. The planning commission received that recommendation. They agreed with us to not go forward with a rural subdivision of that type at this time. But if it is gonna go ahead, that it ought to be done under a requested annexation proceeding. So the Goodyear County Planning Commission made that recommendation, and it goes to the county board the sixteenth or the eighteenth.
Sixteenth, yeah. It's the same as the city council meeting, yeah.
So we'll, we'll see.
Does it go by a couple of years or something else?
It'll come back in a few years.
He'll just keep trying about two, sixteen months or so, he's, that's about right.
Any other comments?
There's a new rental down in grandpa's garage. Does that have to be issued, or...
No one has come to see me yet on that?
Okay.
New renter?
Yeah, I was just curious if, doesn't that have to be a...
Depending on the use, there may be a problem with regards to the new...
Storage of semis. I was just curious, Scott Quaid from, he's from Cannon, he's supposedly renting the property, or the south stor, uh, south part of the building for his shop, and then he's in the store of semis and stuff there.
Which sounds like a use different from what it was before.
So I was just curious if anybody contacted, do you own that deal or no?
And the owners received...
On Kurt's stuff, he, when he was here that evening, he was saying his water bill's like sixteen hundred bucks, and there's a toilet in there that gets used once in a while. I was just wondering how that came about like that. It seemed like a little much.
I would think a kitchen facility uses a lot more than...
Yeah, but nobody's in there for the kitchen facility or, you know...
The use that Jay is describing would go against the special zoning that they created there, subject to...
Well, that's what I mean, it would have to get approval for, to let it come in, wouldn't it?
The council could, you know, but yeah, they gotta come in and...
We can look at that, but no, and there has not been any communication with me on that. I've talked with several members of the family in the last six months as we've kind of evolved through this new zoning district, and it seemed to be clear what the implications of the new zoning were. So I'll follow up and see.
Has the highway department decided when they're gonna start putting signs up to Detour nineteen this year?
I haven't heard the sign plan yet from them. And I think they're gonna be fully closed down for, I think, for a couple of weeks. Yeah, so, but that'll be probably later this summer when...
Let's say it was August something.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, I think other things are going forward as we've discussed and planned. The hospital breaks ground on Friday for the new hospital. The Olmsted Medical Clinic project is obviously taking shape with the building, and I don't have a bid date yet on the access connection to Highway twenty, but we've been working with MINDOT and getting that permitted, and getting XL to move their power poles and do all those sorts of things. So we did purchase the right-of-way, the city owns the right-of-way now for that, so that's going forward.
How much did they, from where to where did they purchase?
All the way through the site. So we have enough right-of-way to get from Highway twenty east to the top of the hill.
To the top of the hill?
Yep.
But nothing further to the northeast?
Well, at the top of the hill, we run into some city-owned property, and then the Fifth Street path, I guess, going into the city well site. So we can actually get all, we can get where we need to get to in the future. But the, but the whole road will only be built to just beyond the access drive going into the clinic. So the road won't be built all the way from twenty east up the hill, but we've got all the right-of-way to build that. So we'll build, like we talked about, we'll build the street just past the entrance driveway into the, to the new clinic.
Have they been discussing going from St. Ansgers over to the southwest?
Yeah, have not, not yet.
Okay. Just curious.
So the first, the first piece is at least in the process of being finalized, so we can get there? And I expect Casey's will start soon. Now that, hopefully it's gonna warm up on these days, but...
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
They should be starting demolition, I would think, in the not-too-distant future, so...
Had they said anything about on the, coming up for the collector, coming up in behind SA and stuff there? Their borings didn't come out the way they wanted? Have you heard anything? Wasn't? Because I know they're even worse when you go across on Miller's property and start down the hill the other side. There's water that runs out of there on the driest years we've ever had.
Yeah, there's...
Clay again?
Ah, it's worse than...
What is it?
That clay? That shale, yeah.
Yeah, yes, they are aware of that.
So then that may complicate things there, I take it, huh?
Well, it becomes a cost issue that I know the county's evaluating on how far they build this road, at least at this point. So I think the question that I hear still is, is given the overall costs of the construction, how far beyond Three Hundred and Eighteenth Street going to the, kind of the north and east? How much beyond Three Hundred and Eighteenth Street does this project go at this point?
On the, what would it be, east side of Sandstone Ridge there? There's a storm sewer that runs out and dumps out into nowhere land out there. It's not on Norton's, I'm not sure what it dumps on, but should wander off there over there one day and just take a look at that. It's kinda like Niagara Falls and just about as far down.
Yeah, I'm sure this time of year too.
Yeah. And it's right at the tail end of Roar's property there, but it's made quite the scenic.
Anything else? Seeing two no's. No. What about you, Bruce?
What?
Anything else?
No, nothing else?
Yeah? All right. Well, then that brings us to number nine, which is adjourn. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Well, that sounded like a tie.
That was a tie.
Sharnell and, and then Hama and Longton, they both agreed. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.